I'd like to call the order of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for July 24th, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you take your role, please?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 27th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium and please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. Would everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
For your consent matters, items one through 44, I need a motion to continue item number seven to August 7th, delegation of authority to the county executive to approve administrative county policies.
So moved.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. I also need a motion to continue item 31 to September 11th. This is an ordinance that will be introduced on September 11th, repealing and reenacting county fire codes contained in Code Chapter 17.04.
Before we have motions, I just wanted to understand, this is the second time we've continued this, these are state requirements. Are we thinking we can change something?
Supervisor Peters, the continuation last week was due to Supervisor Natoli's just inquiry about the item, and those questions were answered. The continuation this week surfaced as a result of the Metro Fire, who is bringing forward the modifications to the state codes. They have some, a little bit further work to do with two jurisdictions, City of Citrus Heights, as well as City of Rancho Cordova regarding a couple of the recommendations in terms of the code changes. And so they want to have an opportunity to work that through before we brought it finally in front of our board. That's the reason for this.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion then. Please vote.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank both county staff, our building officials, and Metro Fire and Consumer Service District Fire officials for meeting with me and went through quite a few of the questions I had. And as Mr. Penrose said, they were answered, and I appreciate the time spent last week. Thanks.
Any other announcements, Madam Clerk?
No announcements for quick notes.
Madam Chair, I just had one item, item number 32. Madam Clerk, can you read that on the record?
Item 32 is the contract for the Mather Lake Dam Improvement Project, final contract acceptance.
We received a question yesterday. We didn't get time to communicate back to the board members, so, Mr. Penrose, can you provide the answer?
The question was in regards to the amount made available by the Air Force for the dam restoration project, which was documented in the board item as 5.3 million essentially was made available to that. The total cost for the dam restoration project will be less than the 5.3 million. And for clarification, the Air Force is paying just for the actual costs of the dam project. There will be no ability to use any of the savings that were allocated for this specific project up to the 5.3 million. So, what you see in the board letter, just for clarification, you see the contract cost, and you don't see the total cost because that was not reported, but it is less than the 5.3 that's been allocated by the Air Force for this project.
Is that everything, Mr. County Executive?
That is.
Okay, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
If you're going to have a big discussion about this, I have to leave. I, you know.
Not a big discussion.
Okay.
One follow-up, I actually asked a question last week about this, but my question was just, were there any other items that we would have done, i.e. any additional restoration around the lake that may have, you know, impacted, obviously lowered the spillway, took care of the issue that related to downstream? I just was curious, was there anything else that we would have done beyond just the utility of that, but certainly matching with the project? And that's my question before, again, we didn't know what this was going to come in as, and so my question is, is there anything else we would have accomplished out there, relative landscaping to trees, you know, beginning with?
No, it's my understanding, Supervisor, that we've done the full scope of the project as was proposed with the Air Force and was the intended funded program.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did you have any other items, Mr. Natoli?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Ms. Frost?
No.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. This is regarding item number eight.
Item number eight is authorization to appoint Stephen M. Garrett as the public defender.
Okay, I want to let the record show that I'm going to abstain on this vote, but before we take the vote on consent with that notation, I want to explain my abstention. It is not because I have little confidence in either of the two finalists for the position of public defender that I'm abstaining, but it is because of what I think was an unfortunate turn of events at the end of the process for selection. Came to my attention very late in the process that certain references were not checked for candidates for this position, and I think it's an important enough one, our public defender, that those references, especially if they're other elected leaders in our judicial system, and those from the bench are not consulted, I think it really leaves that part of understanding as well as you can the candidates left to the curbside. So, this is not a reflection of the candidates, this is a reflection of the process.
Nothing else? Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I mean, I didn't know if there was going to be additional discussion, but I too wanted to weigh in, and I know certainly the candidate being recommended is here in the audience this morning, and not too much, so much to echo Mr. Serna's comments, but I know that each of us has received input, certainly in support of the recommendation being brought forward by the county exec. But also, I think, in light of, I think, some historical issues in the public defender's office, historical in the sense that, as we've seen, some turnover, folks that have served with that office, obviously have expressed their concerns about matters that have been handled duly within the framework of personnel ordinances and so forth, but also, I think, as a release disappointment, we had two candidates from the office, and again, communication is, in most cases, you know, in the public record in support of candidates. I'll tell you that I too contemplated abstaining on this. I recognize the responsibility goes with the county executive, and certainly, in this case, Mr. Wagstaff in his deputy position and doing the interviews and conducting that. And I don't want my comments to reflect negatively certainly on any of the candidates that applied for it, and obviously we have a recommendation. I would tell you this, though, that certainly in light of, again, as I'm using my word, historical issues over the last few years, I think it's critically important that whoever, and obviously we have a recommendation here, Mr. Garrett, that there's a need to, I think, not only address issues, but to bring some healing to the situations that have existed down there. The public defender's office is a very important and critical piece of the justice system in this county, and I think certainly Mr. Gill and Mr. Wagstaff and their consideration considered that, but I think that that's going to be key. And I would, again, I guess, address Mr. Gill in this regard, that I think that irrespective of who were chosen for this report, I think it's going to be very, very important, Mr. Gill, you're aware of the issues of which I speak, some which are known, some which are obviously of a personnel nature, but I think that's going to be very key. This office, obviously, even with what you bring us today, have expressed, you know, a kind of a split opinion, at least from their vantage points, and I think that's reflected in some of the comments from the community, some very positive, again, not negative comments about either of the candidates that were the final two. But nonetheless, I wanted to point that out, because I think it's very important. I'm respectful of the county exec's role by charter in bringing, making the department head selections. For many, many years, it's been a very common practice to bring this board for affirmation and confirmation, although I don't believe under the law and under charter that's actually required. But I want to just say this and say it very publicly, that I think from the standpoint of all of our departments, but certainly with regards to this department, again, there's a critical role when I see, you know, the cases that come before the courts and the public defender and the prosecutor's role and all that, I think there's little time for things that distract from that. And so I think it's going to be incumbent upon certainly you, Mr. Gill, you, Mr. Wagstaff, certainly Mr. Garrett, in the disappointment, assuming it's approved this morning, to see to it that that healing occurs. And again, you can't make people, you know, I guess, come around, but I think it's going to be very important, because there obviously is, are there divisions, and this department is not an anomaly in that regard, but I think it's very, very important from the standpoint of the work that the public defenders call upon, the leadership in that office. I intend to support your recommendation this morning, not without a lot of thought, I'll just say that, because again, as I said, as I opened my comments, I considered abstaining as well, because I think the message needs to be very clear, that the role of the public defender is key to what we do in justice, carrying out justice in this community, and we have little time for some of the things, I think, that have distracted from the ability for that office to, you know, live up to the expectations. We have some very fine people and a very fine staff, legal minds that provide defense for folks in this community. So, I guess with that, I'll leave my comments there, and certainly ask that you, Mr. Gill, stay very close on this matter.
Thanks, I will.
Anyone else wish to comment?
No, I wasn't planning to comment, but I have to say, I find character assassination in a public meeting to be really unacceptable, and I have never received so many letters in favor of a candidate. It's unusual, certainly, and there was one letter that said several judges were against this, and when the judges were called, they said, "No, that wasn't their opinion at all." So, I just feel very unhappy with this kind of thing being discussed on a personnel decision that's being made by county staff whom we appointed, and we trust that they are going to use their best opinion in appointing someone to this position. So, I thank you for that, and...
Can I ask who's assassinating the character of anyone?
Did you just listen to Mr. Natoli?
I didn't think that was character assassination at all.
Yes, it was.
It was not, Madam Chair.
You said, you said that there were problems in the department.
Historical problems.
Well, it certainly sounded like you were blaming them on Mr. Garrett.
Absolutely not.
Well...
I will dispute that for the record. I did not say that, and I did not even infer that. If you took that from my comments, that was absolutely wrong.
Well, it felt inferred to me.
I said I was supporting the recommendation of the county executive.
I heard that.
Yeah, and I was not demeaning Mr. Garrett nor the other candidates in this...
I believe you were demeaning him.
Well, I don't believe it at all, and I take great exception to that. That's not my...
I know it's not your style, but...
No, absolutely not.
It sounded like it to me today.
Well, you didn't hear it right.
Okay, so we're back to a call for, oh, excuse me, and I'm going to recuse myself on items 14 and 32 due to potential business conflict of interest.
We need a motion for the ballot.
Motion for consent. Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 14 and 32, and Supervisor Phil Serna abstained from item number eight, unanimous vote. Item 45, recognizing Rick Wright for 35 years of service.
Good morning, Chair Peters, members of the board. My name is Cheryl Lynn Davis, Deputy Director at the Department of Human Assistance. I am honored to be here this morning to recognize Rick Wright for 35 years of service. Rick began his employment with Sacramento County at the Department of Human Assistance in June of 1983. Since then, he has worn a variety of hats in a number of classifications within the department. Rick came on board as a clerk, then on to stock clerk and storekeeper during the 80s. In 1989, Rick decided to try the program side of the house and became an eligibility worker. In the mid 90s, moved on to administrative services officer, performing analyst work in both the Information Systems Division and the Internal Security Unit. In 2007, he decided fiscal would be his next adventure and took on the role of fiscal services manager, overseeing the benefits issued to our customers and the payments to our childcare providers. In March of 2018, Rick promoted to senior administrative analyst and is currently the budget officer responsible for DHA's aid payments budget unit. Rick is hardworking, dependable, and always willing to lend a helping hand. Whether it be a challenge or opportunity that arises, Rick's typical response is, "What can I do to help?" He is a team player, and I very much appreciate his positive attitude. When asked what he likes about his job in this department, Rick will tell you that it's all about the people, the customer, making a positive change in the people's lives who we serve. On a personal note, Rick is happily married for 32 years to his wife Candy and has two children, son Chris, age 30, and daughter Stephanie, age 27. In his spare time, you can catch Rick on the golf course. Rick, really, it is a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
You are a valuable asset to the DHA team. Thank you for the enthusiasm, professionalism, dedication that you bring to the job every day. Congratulations on your 35 years of service.
I'd just like to say that it's been a pleasure to work in a department for 35 years where I've had so many opportunities to grow, to advance, and certainly a privilege to have had so many great supervisors and managers who've given me opportunities and shown me, mentored me on how to be a great employee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We don't have very many employees that have 35 years of service, so that's awesome. Thank you for spending all that time with the county.
Welcome.
Item 46 is the hearing to lean delinquent solid waste service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent solid waste service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
So, there are five items that you're approving as the Board of Supervisors and one item as the Water Agency Board. So, in today's reports...
Excuse me, could you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize.
You're not Wendy Randolph, which is what it says on the staff report.
I apologize. Ben Lamera, Director of Finance.
Thank you.
And in today's reports that you have before you, they contain preliminary information as of June 19th, 2018. The number of delinquent accounts will continue to decrease on these items until these accounts and balances are transferred to the tax process on August 27th. And as requested in previous years, we will provide a report of the numbers to the board when the final transfer to the tax process is complete. And you want me to go through the recommendations? So, for item number 46, the recommendation is for the solid waste service charges to be transferred to the tax roll.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lamera?
No.
Okay. We have a motion, Chair?
These are public hearings, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. Open the public hearing. Anyone here, I don't have anyone signed up. Does anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. We have a motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 47, this is hearing to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges for the City of Citrus Heights and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay.
And this is, we just need you to vote.
It's the same thing again, only it's the City of Citrus Heights.
The next five items are the same?
Right.
Okay.
I don't have any questions from the board. Open the public meeting. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Close the public meeting. Have a motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 48, hearing to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges for the City of Rancho Cordova and order delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
The same thing, but for the City of Rancho Cordova.
That's correct.
Okay. You have a motion? Oh, sorry. Public hearing open. Anyone wish to speak?
Who do I?
Public hearing's closed.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 49, hearing to lean delinquent storms drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay, same thing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none. Close the meeting. Close the public hearing.
Move the item. Second.
Motion, a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then you have item 50, hearing to lean delinquent utility taxes and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility taxes be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay, same thing, right?
Correct.
A motion? A public hearing? Anyone here to speak to this item? No? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
A motion, a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then your final item, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, hearing to lean delinquent water use service charges and adoption of the resolution ordering the delinquent water use service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Hey, same story. Public hearing's open. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Don't see anyone waving. Public hearing closed.
Need approval?
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
We're almost on time. Well, we're ahead of time.
Do you want to take up your nominations?
Sure. What item is that?
That is...
57.
57.
Okay.
Okay, you're ready? Okay. Item 57, you are continuing to August 21st Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council for your items today, Children's Coalition. Madam Chair?
Chief's recommend Reginald H. Claytor to the interest area vacancy and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. Continue the remainder to September 11th.
Unanimous vote. First five Sacramento Commission.
Chief's recommend reappointing Donna Snaringer and Christina Elliott as community alternates to the first five commission.
Okay. In-home supportive services advisory committee.
Continue to September 11th.
Okay. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Continue to August 21st for District 3 with, and keep the filing open.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
Continue to August 21st.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Frost?
Continue to August 21st.
And then we have the Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Chief's recommend nominating Nicole Carr, Robert Goss, and Aaron Stumpf to the Bicycle Advisory Committee and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. Continue the remainder to August 21st.
Okay. And then we have the Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Recommend reappointing Mark White and Richard Hun, Jr.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay.
I really caught up.
Yeah. So, it looks like the next item is at 10:15.
We have some off agenda? We have any, we have an off agenda? Person want to address us?
I was going to wait till the end of the meeting.
Oh, were you? Okay. Well, Mr. Baker, they're in the middle of pear harvest. If we could take his comments, I would ask him...
All right, Mr. Baker. Off agenda item. And you know, since this is not our agenda, we can't take any action. Is that correct?
I'm not asking you to take any action here today.
Okay.
I appreciate you taking the time to hear my comments and...
You state your name for the record.
My name is Brett George Baker, and as Mr. Natoli mentioned, we're just beginning pear harvest today, so I just wanted to come up here, and I figured this is my last opportunity to make comments, make you aware of some of these issues before, oh, before our assessment proceeding actually went through. And so I have some written comments. I submitted them by email electronically. Apparently, they didn't get through. I'll provide you this written copy here to you when I'm done. I just would like to read it into the record if I could. Honorable Supervisors, I Brett Baker am writing you today on behalf of my family's ranch. I have the APN number listed here on Sutter Island within the boundaries of Reclamation District 349 in the southern reaches of the county. This property has been our family since the 1800s. I am writing you today to inform you of some issues and developments regarding the potential levy of a proposed groundwater management fee via Proposition 218. Reclamation District 349 has had some procedural irregularities, that's their term, not mine. I provided an attachment with an email documenting this. They've made the North Delta Groundwater Sustainability Agency aware of these irregularities and taking their legislative action to join this JPA. I further contend that the North Delta Groundwater Sustainability Agency fee proposal has been effectuated in such a manner as to be violative of the constitutional restraints in Proposition 218. I provided a form of their notice. That's Attachment B. I'm also writing to inform you that if the said assessment is passed and adopted by the Indy GSA, is my intention to formally protest and litigate the imposition of this fee. So, I can go into further detail. I can just give you this copy here if you have any questions.
If you just give it to the clerk, she'll make copies and make sure everyone has it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking time to come in today.
Thank you so much for listening to me early.
Good luck with the pears.
Thanks, Brett.
Any other business before...
Pear Fair is last Sunday, July 11th.
Very good.
That's next Sunday.
No further business.
Our recess start 10:15.
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, for item 52, this is a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property for the Elk Grove Floren Road Bridge at Elder Creek Project. Property owner Praxides G. DeLeon Living Trust located at 7590 Elk Grove Floren Road. Property owner George S. DeLeon and Eugene M. DeLeon as trustees of the DeLeon Revocable Trust dated January 2nd, 1991, as to an undivided one-half interest, and Maria C. DeLeon, a married woman, as to an undivided one-half interest located at 7572 Elk Grove Floren Road. Property owner three, James G. McCord, a married man, and his soul and separate property as to an undivided one-third interest. Clark L. Stevens as trustee of the Stevens Family Trust dated February 19th, 1981, as to an undivided one-third interest, and Raza H. Mahftakar and Catherine C. McMillan, husband and wife, as community property, as to an undivided one-third interest located approximately 800 feet northerly from the northwest corner of the Gerber Road and Elk Grove Floren Road on Elk Grove Floren Road. The environmental document is a sequo notice of determination.
Good morning. Chair Peters, members of the board, Jeff Gasway with General Services, and I'm here to introduce this item that recommends a board approve for a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Elk Grove Floren Road Bridge and Elder Creek Project. The project will replace the existing functional obsolete bridge crossing Elder Creek. The resolution of necessity before you today are for acquisition easements for public roadway and public utilities, easement for public utilities and public facilities required for the project. The three projects that are affected by the resolution of necessity are located on or adjacent to Elk Grove Floren Road at Elder Creek and are described in the list of properties, which is Attachment 2 in your board documents. County staff have made numerous contacts with respective owners beginning in October. These are outlined in the history of contacts in Attachment 3 in your board package. The county obtained appraisals from independent appraisers for each of the properties and presented offers to the property owners for the purchase... presented offers to the property owners for the purchase of the easements I just mentioned. However, to date, there are no executed purchase agreements. The notice of intention to seek approval for resolution of necessities were mailed out to property owners by registered mail at least fifteen days before today's meeting. If you have any questions regarding the project or the property in question, I have staff available to answer, to address your questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. I do have one member of the public signed up to speak. Blair Will.
Madam Chair, I'm actually here to speak on item fifty-three. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Says fifty-two. All right.
Thank you.
There be a motion? There are no comments?
Ma'am Chair, if I just could, we did receive a letter, the clerk did, from Mr. Deleon to address this. It was in the packet, and I don't know, maybe Jeff you could...
We received an email from the family this morning, and they are not going to show or ask for thirty day continuance, and we are scheduling the meeting to meet with them later on this week.
Okay. But yeah, then I would move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
Item fifty-three is the resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property for the Gerber Elder Creek Channel Improvement Project from Elk Grove Reserve. Vachi Cabayan and Katia Cabayan, trustees of the Vachi Cabayan and Katia Cabayan Family Trust, the Kerr Family LLC, Thomas P. Kerr Incorporated, Thomas P. Kerr, Bruce E. Beddig, BMB Investment Company, Reserve Interest and Management Incorporated, Margot K. Thielander, John L. Miller, and Joyce L. Miller as trustees of the nineteen ninety-three Irrevocable, Irrevocable Beddig Family Trust. Mary Eugenia Shamu located on the east side of Elk Grove Floren Road approximately one thousand feet north of Gerber Road. The environmental document is an environmental impact report and supplemental environmental impact report.
Good morning. Chair Peters, members of the board, Jeff Gasway, General Services, and I'm here to introduce this item which recommends the board approve resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interest for the Department of Water Resources Gerber Elder Creek Channel Improvement Project. The project improvements will allow for gravity drainage of storm drains, pipes, and is designed for future developments for the impact of the one hundred year floodplain. The project that is affected by this resolution of necessity is located on the east side of Elk Grove Floren Road approximately thousand feet north of Gerber Road and consists of approximately thirty-six acres of raw land formerly operated as a golf course. The real property interest required for the, for the project is approximately fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five square feet for a drainage easement located along Gerber Creek, which is in your attachment, one of your board package. County staff have made numerous contacts with the property, with the respective owners beginning November seventh, November two thousand seventeen. These are outlined in the history of owner contacts. The county obtained an appraisal from an independent appraiser for the property and presented the offer to the property owner for the purchase of the easements I just mentioned. However, to date, there are no executed purchase agreements. Notice of intentions to seek approval for resolution of necessity was mailed to the property owners by registered mail fifteen days before today's meeting. If you have any questions regarding the project or the property in question, I have staff available to address them.
Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, ma'am Chair. Jeff, if I could, we received correspondence that went to the clerk dated last Friday, I believe, and some that was dated earlier last week. And the property in question was a former champions golf course and driving range and as outlined in the letter from Mr. Beddig, and obviously there's counsel here today representing the property owner group. There was, in the letter that we all received, discussion about the code enforcement issue that's been ongoing for some time, and I think some of the frustration property owners have felt in attempting to deal with that on the private side of it. But it's kind of bundled up in this discussion here this morning, at least in the correspondence we received, in that they're asking that as a part of this, there's the financial piece that goes with acquiring a property, but then that there be some consideration for, I guess, if there are code enforcement outstanding charges and so forth. Could you just elaborate on discussions and whether or not that can actually be a part of a settlement?
I don't, I'd have to defer to county council on that. I don't believe that we can mix the two.
Now, are there, have there been liens placed against the property for delinquent code enforcement charges? I mean, again, that's not spelled out in the letter from the...
I believe so. Keith, did you want to address that?
Good morning, board members. Deputy County Counsel Keith Floyd. I'm not aware of actual liens at this point, but there are code enforcement charges that have been incurred. And I believe, I looked yesterday on the Excela system, and I thought, I saw it was around sixty-eight hundred dollars. All having to do, actually, the property has gone to a nuisance abatement hearing. I believe there's been some activity out there that the property owners have taken to abate the nuisance, but there's a continuing problem of junk and rubbish. There's a mention in here of a criminal action. As of yesterday, there was no action that's been filed. As to your question with respect to whether negotiations are for a possible settlement relating to the acquisition can include the code enforcement action, those are two separate matters. I can understand from the property owner's perspective, it's the county as a larger entity. But in terms of what can actually be paid is just compensation for the necessary easements for the project. It's just the amount that has been, first of all, it's been offered, and then the property owner has their own appraisal and whether there can be a negotiated settlement based on dollars for that. So, you know, we have other actions where the Department of Transportation or whichever department it is might take some action to do something else to address an issue having to do with the project, build a wall or something like that. But in this case, again, they're two separate matters, so there's nothing that the department can do with respect to the code enforcement matter.
Well, I just might note that what we're proposing here is to acquire frontage along Elk Grove Floren Road. This property obviously has access to Gerber, and the property is much larger than what's being, you know, negotiated relative to the actual acquisition. And, and, and I guess I would just say, and certainly hear from counsel from the property owners, but that irrespective of how this gets ironed out, that if the property was acquired, there's still a large piece of property that will be there that, you know, until it's redeveloped or developed in a different fashion and/or, you know, some of the nuisance activities cease by virtue of somebody's actions, that's still going to exist irrespective of what we do here. Is that...
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks, ma'am Chair.
Other questions for staff? I do have a speaker, Blair Will. Excuse me.
Good morning, everyone. I am Blair Will with Pioneer Law Group. I'm here on behalf of Bruce Beddig. Bruce Beddig is a managing member of the Elk Grove Reserve. Some of you may already know him. Mr. Beddig and the Elk Grove Reserve do not oppose the resolution of necessity or the acquisition of the property. As was earlier discussed, there are some issues related to the fair market value of the property. So, there's no opposition. Elk Grove Reserve nevertheless would need to recover fair market value for the property. Mr. Beddig appreciates that that's an ongoing conversation and fair market value is not on the table in this particular juncture of the process. But he wanted me to make you aware that he doesn't oppose the resolution, but he is going to, to the best of his ability, negotiate fair market value which meets his requirements. And just so you know, at this point, I think based upon some oral offers that were made by the county, were within a range of ten or fifteen thousand dollars apart on the agreed fair market values. It seems to me and to Mr. Beddig that we could ultimately work out some kind of arrangement in that regard. The larger problem and the reason that Mr. Beddig asked me to address you this morning, and I appreciate your indulgence on this, concerns the homeless problem and the abatement. And Mr. Beddig has taken some steps, some substantial steps to abate the nuisance pursuant to the order from the county. There have been numerous efforts to clean up trash on the property. He has demolished the onsite bathroom that was there previously from the existing uses of golf course. All of those steps have been taken to the best of his ability. He has hired private security to come around on a regular basis. Frankly, the security company is a little bit unhappy with the circumstances in dealing with the homeless people there. While this has been going on, I appreciate earlier comments stating that this was two separate processes, and we all understand that. At the same time, while a resolution of necessity and acquisition of the property is being negotiated by one portion of the county, another portion of the county is threatening Mr. Beddig with a criminal indictment. Yes, it's true, the criminal indictment has not yet issued, but as of last week, we are receiving emails from the district attorney stating that she's going to go forward with a criminal indictment. So, this is very serious. Mr. Beddig has retained criminal counsel. I'm not that person. But I do think that from the board's perspective, that's something that we should be looked into. Mr. Beddig is being tasked with taking care of a homeless problem that exists as a larger problem for the county as we all know. So, those are my comments. If you have any questions, I will remain around the chambers for a moment. Thank you.
You wait just a minute. Mr. Natoli has a question for you.
Yeah. More just a comment, Mr. Will. I would just indicate, I know the community prosecutors obviously work with code enforcement and other enforcement agencies of the county on issues that have, you know, a certain standing to them. I guess I would suggest that maybe it's already occurred that last year, we certainly ramped up through board actions, our work to, and I, Mr. Beddig and his correspondents included some of the homeless initiatives. But what I was going to suggest is that in working with the Sheriff's Department, we have a homeless outreach team that will work with, you know, property owners, certainly and community prosecutor, obviously if there are ongoing nuisance, we'll get involved. But they've been very effective in dealing with, and some of these are reoccurring, it's not just here on this property, if that's the case. It's, you know, throughout our communities. And it might be, again, you're not counsel for him on this matter, but I would just offer, certainly I've met Bruce in the past, that it might be to arrange a meeting before things get too, too far down the road here with sheriff's hot team representatives or one of our sergeants pop teams, and recognizing there is a Walmart adjacent that certainly might attract certain activity that I think that, and he's referenced that in the letter, that it might be wise for folks to sit down and talk about a plan of action and where the county could cooperate with the property owner, but recognize obviously property owner responsibility as well. So, I just wanted to...
I appreciate those comments. Thank you, Mr. Natoli. We have worked with the county and with the Sheriff's Department. It's a big problem. The ultimate solution, I presume, is probably redevelopment of the property and to eliminate the...
It's a big acreage, and it spreads out, and it has access to public streets and the creek, and obviously some other things that provides some cover for folks.
I understood. And I would just make one further comment. I'm a land use counsel. I deal with land use matters. I do represent Mr. Beddig in this regard, but not with regard to the criminal proceeding. But I would tell you this, that there are also some other additional abatement processes which are available to the county short of the criminal indictment. So, but we would like to work it out rather than have it go further. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No. I'd move staff recommendation then.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. We're right on time for item fifty-four. Item fifty-four is the Randolph Road tentative parcel map, a rezone for a, a rezone from A-ten to AR-five and tentative parcel map to divide eleven point three two acres into two lots for a property located at one one three five zero Randolph Road in the Consumnas Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good morning, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director, here to give a short PowerPoint presentation and then also briefly explain revised materials that were submitted that have some technical corrections in them and what those are about. So, the project is located at one one three five zero Randolph Road, a half mile west of Dillard Road in the Consumnas Community. The request before you today is to rezone the site, the eleven point three two acre site from A-ten, which is a ten acre minimum, to AR-five, which is five acre minimum, and for a corresponding tentative parcel map for two lots, each both a little over five acres in size. We have concluded that it is compatible with the area and that a slight majority of the surrounding lots, eleven of the twenty surrounding lots are five acres in size or less. With approval of the rezone, the tentative parcel map lot sizes would meet development standards. There is currently a primary residence on, that would end up being on parcel one, and the lot currently has a residential accessory unit that would go as the primary residence on parcel two. And I understand that both of those are modular homes rather than stick-built. There was a negative declaration prepared and some associated mitigation measures around the impact, potential impacts to Swainson's Hawk habitat and native trees. There were neighbors who attended the Community Planning Advisory Council meeting. It had not necessarily opposed the project. One CPAC member objected and voted no because of the potential to add additional accessory dwelling units on each parcel after the parcel map is approved, and that was a concern. The Consumnas CPAC ended up recommending approval on a six to one vote with one absence of the proposed project. The planning commission considered this in June and recommended approval on a four to zero vote with one absence. So, the recommended actions are listed in your board report and on the slide. I did want to clarify, we issued some revised materials. They have to do with the conditions in Attachment Two. They do not change the project or any of the project technical merits. We did miss imposing a legal condition that clarifies that the map is not, not approved until the effective date of the rezone. And then we needed to clarify some coding that guides the clerk's office in the preparation of the post-hearing materials about which are rezone conditions and which are map conditions. And so, that's what that revision does. It doesn't change any of the other conditions. So, that concludes the staff presentation.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, very quickly. I noted in the staff report, and again, you, I think, very aptly covered the community council discussion in summary. And as it relates to any residential accessory units in the future, if they exceed eight hundred square feet, they still require a use permit under our code. So, there would be, if folks had concerns about that, recognizing that's somewhat ministerial now under state law, but nonetheless, there are guidelines for that. Is that correct?
That is correct. The smaller units are allowed outright. Larger units do require a conditional use permit, and we do have a, a number of somewhat controversial accessory dwelling units wandering their way through the process as a result of our new ordinance having to do with judging compatibility, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Are there other questions, ma'am Chair? I'm prepared to move the items.
Second.
That is second?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you. Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
Item fifty-five is an ordinance to amend the Rancho Marietta Plan Development Ordinance related to the Marietta Gardens one and two development. The environmental determination is exempt.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Joelle Lindman, and I am a senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I do have a brief presentation and PowerPoint. The project before you today is an amendment to the Rancho Marietta Plan Development Ordinance. It applies to the section or chapter of the PD ordinance that covers Marietta Gardens one and two development. Highlighted here in red and below in hash marks is the Marietta Gardens one and two site. It's generally bounded by Jackson Highway to the north, the Rancho Marietta Airport, and Consumnas River to the south, and Marietta Village and Marietta Drive to the east. A little background about the Rancho Marietta PD ordinance, seventy-seven PD-ten was adopted in nineteen seventy-seven and was almost a complete rewrite of the Rancho Marietta prior master plan and ordinance. Section ten of the seventy-seven PD established procedures and standards for projects within Rancho Marietta. One of those was that each unit of development be processed as an amendment to the zoning ordinance. This process elevates nearly all proposed projects to the Board of Supervisors for consideration with conditions of approval embedded into the ordinance. Section twenty covers the Marietta Gardens one and two project sites specifically, and this board has seen amendments to that chapter with the Marietta Inn and Hotel, and subsequently approved that project. Specifically, section two seventy-seven of chapter twenty is a condition of approval that allows for all uses within the LC zone to be allowed outright on the property. So, anything that's conditionally permitted or otherwise needing an entitlement would be considered inconsistent with section two seventy-seven. would be considered inconsistent with section 277. So, as that wasn't the intent of, as the projects move forward out there, that they need an entitlement to the Board of Supervisors every single time, staff has initiated this amendment to section 277 of chapter 20. To clarify that uses that are conditionally permitted would be subject to the normal process as outlined in the zoning code. In essence, leveling the playing field for this property to the rest of the unincorporated county. Given that staff believes that it was an oversight, PER began an amendment to the zoning code by taking a resolution of intention to the planning commission on March 12, 2018. The planning commission heard that item and approved the resolution. On March 23, 2018, we took the item to the Consumnis Community Planning Advisory Council. The council had some concerns about whether or not this was allowing for uses above and beyond what the rest of the county was allowed, and we explained that it was actually leveling the playing field. After that explanation, they unanimously recommended approval, six yes with two absences. And finally, on June 11, 2018, the planning commission met and unanimously also recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. And with that, staff is recommending that the board recognize the exempt status of the project and approve the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Frost has a question or comment?
I just wanted to thank staff for working with us on this. It's great that you were able to find a solution that worked for everyone and move approval.
I'm sorry. Mr. Sullivan is here, and he wanted to, did you want to make a comment, Mr. Sullivan? No, not unless we had a question, huh?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Mr. Serna. I didn't see your name come up there.
Is this the first time you presented in front of us?
Um, no, it's not.
You don't present in front of us very often.
I do not, no.
I just wanted to say good job.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Frost, you made a motion on the item?
Second.
Have a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Time, please.
We have four minutes.
So, it's 10:45. We've got four minutes to go, huh? We need to develop some activities within the range of three or four minutes. Okay, we'll recess until 10:45. I'd like to call back to order the Board of Supervisors in Sacramento County, July 24th. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters? And you have a quorum.
Before you go on, could I ask all of our visitors that just came in to please be seated, and if you plan to speak, fill out your speaker form and give it to our clerk. That will make sure everybody's heard. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Item 56, authorize the Department of Waste Management and Recycling to issue request for proposals for 10-year lease of properties in the Kiefer landfill bufferlands.
Good morning, Chair Peters and members of the board. My name is Dave Garridelli. I'm a waste planner with the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. The Department of Waste Management and Recycling owns and operates Kiefer landfill located in the southeast part of the county that meets the disposal needs for the county, the city of Sacramento, and the city of Folsom. As a facility, it includes an elaborate multipurpose recycling area where a number of materials are then sent off-site for recycling. It has an electronics waste recycling receipt location, and antifreeze, batteries, and oils and paint facility, and it is a bioreactor where the organic material deposited into it from the county, the city of Sacramento and the city of Folsom, produces biogas that is fed to a power plant that provides 15 megawatts of power. That's enough to power 9,000 homes in Sacramento. Around Kiefer landfill, throughout the 90s, the county purchased approximately 2,000 acres of bufferland to protect the landfill from encroaching and incompatible uses. The lands are leased for agricultural purposes, largely to tenants who have been farming that land since the county purchased it. The bufferlands are also a publicly owned resource. Kiefer landfill is an almost industrial type of facility, and it serves a critical public need, and it is located right next door to a small and historic agricultural community, Slough House, California, and that makes for an interesting relationship. Many leases have expired in the last couple of years, and a couple more are poised to do so soon. The county seeks authorization to proceed with an RFP, Request for Proposals Process, for longer-term leases with input from your board and with input from the community. What I'd like to do is take you on a brief tour of the bufferlands clockwise from the entrance to Kiefer landfill. The map and property summary are attachment 1 and 2 attached to your board letter, and they follow numerically. Please, as I go along, don't hesitate to stop me for any clarifications, but I'd like to go ahead and go through the tour, and then be happy to answer any questions you have, and then hear from the community. Those are the Kiefer bufferlands, nine leases. The first property is leased to Golden Springs Angus Ranch. They're based in Slough House. They have been farming there since, before the county came into possession of the property. This is probably the busiest property that we have. Immediately across the, from, across Kiefer Boulevard, from the entrance to the landfill, is a series of gas, landfill gas monitoring wells, groundwater extraction wells. It's a system that we are maintaining as part of our mitigation. We have technicians coming in and out of that property on a significantly, pretty much a daily basis, saying hello to the cows. There are, along Grantline Road is the proposed corridor for the southeast Capitol connector. Moving to parcel, to property, not parcel, and again, I'd like to remind you, parcels and properties under lease are not necessarily contiguous or consistent here. Some of the leases cross a number of parcels. Some leases are just parts of other parcels. Property number two is not a lease technically. It is a conservation easement. It's a rich complex of vernal pools that was set aside under perpetual easement as part of the landfill's EIR. It is operated under contract through the Sacramento Valley Conservancy. Property number three, moving over to the east side, is grazed by Craig and Julie Reinhardt. Again, Slough House-based agricultural interest. This property, or most of it, will in decades turn into modules 8 and 9 of the landfill. Property number four is a preserve set aside under the management of Wildlands Incorporated.
I'm sorry, could you back up? What did you mean that parcel 3 is going to turn into parcel 8 and 9?
Modules, modules 8 and 9 of the landfill.
What does that mean?
When the landfill comes to full buildout decades from now, part of that property will be part of Kiefer landfill.
Okay. Terminology, didn't understand it.
Sorry, I may have skipped a word. I'm sorry.
It was the pod thing.
Property number four, excuse me, is also under conservation. It is under the management of Wildlands. The county acquired this. This is the most recent bufferland acquisition from dating five, six years ago. Wildlands operates that. Again, they are in the middle of developing a conservation easement on it. That has not been fully implemented yet, but it will be in time. There is already a prohibition for development on it. Property number five, this is currently formed by Davis Ranch, an iconic interest down in Slough House. Again, has been operated, Davis Ranch has been farming this ground since before the county came into ownership of it. There is a small residence, or a residence on a small piece of property there along Jackson Highway that is in month-to-month lease and has been for a couple of years now, lived in by Luis and Rosara Gomez. Again, they lived in the house before the county came into ownership of it. Number seven is Alpharex Seeds, formerly known as Dairyland Seed. They are a research center, agricultural research center. Property number eight is pasture, which is grazed by Eduardo Gomez, who happens also to be the manager of Alpharex Seeds. And inside that parcel is a 20-acre piece where multicultural broadcasting has erected four AM radio towers. They broadcast in 14, I believe, languages throughout Northern California, news and information and music. Those are the Kiefer bufferlands.
Before you go any further, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah, just before you leave the map, Dave, I just wanted to go back to the first one, the Gold Springs pasture, which is, includes the Lamb property, the Deutra, former Deutra and Westerburg pieces. And I just wanted to be clear about, when it came to bufferlands, that some of those lands, I believe, at least the Deutra piece and maybe even the Westerburg piece, there was contamination, underground contamination that was moving, and those acquisitions were actually, they may have been financed through the way the county did it relative to acquisition of bufferlands, but we actually moved on those properties because we had contaminated the water underneath, and obviously have a treatment system that, over time, I think, has helped shrink some of the groundwater problem, but nonetheless, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, I wanted to be clear on that. The piece across the road on Grantline was done clearly as a part of negotiations on getting bufferland adjacent to the landfill.
Correct. When I spoke of the gas monitoring wells and the groundwater monitoring wells and the groundwater extraction wells, the series of them that are in that property, they are mostly across the street from the landfill, and they are directly related to the groundwater contamination. The Kiefer treatment plant is currently treating that water to clean that up. That is part of our regulatory requirement, and that is, was the primary reason why that property was acquired.
Right, because the Westerburg, because I think Deutra first and the Westerburg Prager piece, and again, we had contamination issues and worked through that beginning even in the late 80s, those conversations, and obviously acquired them in the 90s. So, okay, thanks.
Correct. All that property, you'll notice that it is in two pieces, if you will. It's notable that the property on the northwest side of Grantline Road is actually county-owned, but inside the city limits of Rancho Cordova.
Go ahead.
Any other questions?
No, is that it?
Well, the department is, you know, we've worked hard to establish relations with the community of Slough House. As you can imagine, it's a very interesting set of relations. Rents are paid in full and on time. Problems are quickly addressed, and most importantly, lines of communication are open.
Okay, and so, your request today is that we issue an RFP on the 10-year leases?
That we authorize the Department of Waste Management to issue a request for proposals.
Okay, well, we have quite a few speakers, so thank you so much. Doesn't look like the board has any additional questions. So, I have quite a few speakers here. We have a two-minute limit, although I understand Mr. Grimshaw and Mr. and Mrs. James want to provide background. I don't know where you are out there. Did you wish to go first and provide this background? I'll give you a couple extra minutes to explain it.
I'm not really good at public speaking, so just bear with me.
We'll take it easy on you.
Hello, my name is Rick Grimshaw, and I'm one of the owners of Davis Ranch, and I'm here today before the board representing Davis Ranch and to ask you for a special accommodation to be made for us and the other leases of the properties that the county has acquired for buffer zone to the Kiefer landfill and the Slough House community. My family has been farming these same properties in Slough House since it was a part of Mexico, literally. They settled the area and were the first non-Natives to start clearing, leveling, and sowing the land. Over the years, the land has slowly sold off to new owners and rented back to others who had farmed it. Many years ago, all the property rental agreements were done with a handshake and nod and no more. When the county acquired these properties, they told us that nothing was going to change, but it did. Within a few years, the county acquired these properties, the lease for the acquired properties was put out to open bid, and we nearly lost control of the right to farm them. It was a highly disconcerting time. The property that the county owns is situated in between four of the properties that we rent. It's landlocked except for an entrance ramp off of Jackson Highway on the Consumnis River levee, which we never used because we have other access to the property. For us, loss would mean moving tractors up and down Jackson Highway on a narrow elevated portion of the road where it's built up on top of the Consumnis River levee up to 10 times a day. Keeping control of this county property is paramount to our business survival. It is also an integral part of the farming operation that we do, and if we were to lose control, that would probably mean the end of Davis Ranch as it exists today. And if Davis Ranch were to end, so would the farming staple in East Sacramento County that people have counted on and become accustomed to. It would be devastating not only to us and our employees, but to the residents of Slough House who have also become accustomed to their shared notoriety of our famous Slough Sweet Corn. I have people tell me all the time that Ed Davis put the sleepy little enclave of Slough House on the map. And also loss would be the 1.3 million pounds of produce donated every year to the local Sacramento Food Link through our partner nonprofit, Helping Hands Produce. We provide, well, sorry, we pride ourselves on being good stewards of the land and treat the properties that we rent as if they are our own. We keep the aesthetics beautiful by removing weeds and clutter in times of fire and high water danger, sometimes standing guard throughout the night on levee watch, stopping a disaster if we can. Just two short years ago, my two partners who are here today and myself stopped a levee break on county property late at night by building a 12-inch berm along the top of the Deer Creek levee with one of our tractors, using only moonlight, showing in between the clouds to see what we were doing. The water rise stopped about halfway up that berm before receding, thwarting a disaster. A levee break can easily cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage and ruin the farm ground forever, and I can honestly say I did not see a single county employee nor a Department of Water Resources employee on that cold, dark night. In the kind of farming that we do, grown here and sold by us direct to the public at a roadside stand, we are the very epitome of the farm-to-fork movement that is stressed so hard in the Sacramento region, and we have been doing it for quite a while now, starting back in 1964 at my parents' house across the street from where the stand is today, then continuing on with Ed Davis in 1972, and then us, Davis Ranch in 1992. We have a 54-year history of growing and selling fresh produce direct to the public. In our type of farming, we need to look out into the future on a 10-year plan or more, and the threat of losing the rights to a property will cause pause and panic, or in case, in our case, ruin. What we are asking for is stability in the lease process so we can continue on what we are being, or what we are doing, giving a reasonable... process, so we can continue on what we are being, or what we are doing, giving a reasonable, giving us a renewable lease that contains the 3% increase per year that the county has in all of its leases, but without the burdensome, and I might say highly stressful, bidding process that takes place every five years now. We cannot compete with some of the other types of farming, such as wine grapes and saw, which command a much higher yield price than for the edible foodstuffs that we grow. In an open bidding process, we will lose. There is way more to having a good tenant that watches over your investment than it is to having a few more dollars in a rent check providing food security to our region. All the other properties that we lease from the landowners in Slough House are leased to us on a renewable basis. And you can go back and ask each and every one of those landowners if they are good with that kind of an arrangement. And to a person, I can guarantee you that the answer is going to be yes, because they know that they don't have to worry about their property and the rent is going to be paid on time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. First of all, let me say thank you for saving the levee. That was important to all of us. And, go on. How long did you think you needed? Did you, a couple minutes?
Not real long.
Okay, all right.
But I could talk for 20 if you'd like. That's why I wrote it down, so I wouldn't throw too much in. My name is Janice James. I live in Slough House, and I'm one of the landowners, like you, that Rick was talking about, one of the several who currently rents to Davis Ranch. I'm here primarily for two reasons. Number one, to remind you for at least the eighth time in 20 years of the county's promise not to change farming in Slough House. That's why the county was able to do a negative declaration for the buffer zone, because they said nothing will change. The second reason is to restate, as we have for years, how farming in our area works. It works very well. When most rural communities in this county have disappeared under a sea of houses or just deteriorated, Slough House has thrived. If you drove through there 30 years ago, you're going to see it the same way today. I like being one of the landlords who leases to Davis Ranch. It's not a lucrative position. I always have had to had an outside job, but my main goal has been to preserve my part of our unique little valley, and Davis Ranch has made this possible. I believe other landlord, landowners whose families have been here even longer than mine feel the same way. This is how Davis Ranch works. It is a diversified farm that grows produce on our various pieces of land that they sell directly to the public at a central farm store that happens to be on my piece of property. Unlike monoculture farming, like raising grapes or hops where there's a single crop every year, Davis Ranch plants a wide variety of crops in increments throughout the season. They start with asparagus in the early spring and continue through Christmas trees at the end of December. This has several beneficial effects. For the public, it means a reliable source of local produce fresh from the field. Food banks also benefit from this, all year long. For those of us who value our farmland, this diversification means Davis Ranch is able to practice sustainable agriculture. When I say that, you may be picturing farmers in bib overalls with long beards. But in this case, I'm taking the UC Davis quote, "When I say sustainability rests on the principle that we must meet the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs." In that definition, sustainability involves not only practices that do not deplete the topsoil or the groundwater, but also support the viability of family farms, a decent living for farm laborers, and prevents the disintegration of economic and social conditions in rural communities. Davis Ranch is able to check all these boxes because of landlords like me, the Signorati family, the Westerberg family, the Leadbetter family, and so on. And so far, you guys too. On our combined properties, the growing season is spaced out. Each property and well has active and inactive periods. It's easier to manage diversified crops, to improve water conservation, and to practice crop rotation. When I was a kid, everything in Slough House was hop farms. Everybody irrigated 24 hours a day for a month in all the fields. Things are so much better now. There are almost 40 people who work at Davis Ranch at its peak. The long harvest window means they have jobs for a longer period of time. Many agricultural jobs require workers who are just passing through from one short harvest to the next. Davis Ranch workers, both in the fields and in the store, are valuable members of our community. They rent or own houses in Elk Grove, Wilton, and Galt. Some have been around for more than 40 years. When the buffer zone project was being discussed, we in Slough House questioned whether the county could honor its commitments to us. Here we are several years later, still wondering. Your lease protocol is a problem. Your turnover is a problem. We keep having to come here every time there's a new board or new management at the landfill, or every time someone notices that the county has a bunch of rental property and thinks it should be making a large profit. Could we, once and for all, establish within the county that you made a commitment that requires preserving a small, thriving farming community? This requires you to perhaps rethink your policies so you can become a reliable part of our team.
Thank you very much. Mr. Natoli has a question before you leave.
Yeah. Thank you, ma'am chair. Well, not so much a question, as I want to thank certainly Rick and Jan and others that are here that we'll hear from in a moment. And I wanted to, just by way of kind of framing what Jan alluded to, that some 20 years ago now, we as a county, obviously sought to expand the landfill, and it wasn't without much community involvement. Certainly, there was opposition, and there are others here, and you see John Merchant in the audience, and certainly Rancho Marietta folks. There was a group, Citizens Against Kiefer Landfill, and a lot of consternation about what would happen, not only with the landfill expansion and the impacts of that. And I will just say, we've been a much better neighbor over the last two decades plus, and I certainly commend our staff and others that have been attentive to that. But to Jan's point, and alluded to, certainly Rick's comments, and I'm sure probably echoed by others here today, I think one of the things beyond just the lease length of time and whatever's prescribed in law, but I think the certainty and as, obviously, this board has evolved over time with, you know, certainly changes in its members, I think it's important to memorialize in a way that certainly keeps us within the confines of what law requires relative to public lands, their management and their lease. But I think beyond that, and I know that in my conversation with Mr. Gill, certainly with Mike Penrose and Doug Sloan and others, I think that there needs to be, at this juncture, you know, obviously depending upon what this board directs here today, but to have a much stronger memorialization of what that means. And again, that may evolve over time, but I think to Jan's point, that what we see in Slough House pretty much mirrors what was there, you know, a generation or two ago. You know, the highway's a little wider and, you know, there's more cars and, but a lot of the historic structures are still in place, and it really is a jewel. And when you look at certainly development east in Rancho Marietta, but certainly to the west with things that are planned as well as already built, you know, protecting this and part of the public ownership, I think, allows the opportunity to do that. So I just wanted to, by way of background, reference, you know, in these chambers 20 years ago, some of the pretty hard-fought battles related to the landfill and preservation of farming lands, and as we looked at the whole buffer land acquisition program and protecting the public asset, the landfill, but certainly recognizing, I think, the long-term commitment by landowners, farmers, and others in this county. And I think we've been a good partner. But I do think that going forward, as again, you know, board membership will change over the decades, I think it's important to have some memorialization so it's clear, as long as there are farmers that want to farm, and that we have some established uses there, that we ought to do everything we can to promote that. And certainly, I think, we've seen that with farm-to-fork and some other things. And so I just wanted to interject here, because I think what Jan and Rick provided is important backdrop, is obviously very personal, but I think it's also very important to this county and to a way of life that is certainly been taxed in a lot of different ways that relates to their people's ability to keep farming. And I think we have the opportunity to really promote that here in a positive way, beyond what we might do with waste management, recycling under leases. And so I guess I would just stress that, I don't know Nav or Mike, anything you might want to weigh in.
We still have eight more speakers.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out, be thinking about that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Could I just get one little word in now that he's stopped talking? Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Okay. Leland Schneider Jr., and then William Skinnell, and then Jim Prager and Susan Westerberg. We do have a two-minute limit. We allowed that to be a little longer to kind of lay the groundwork. So, just wanted you to keep that in mind.
I don't like to talk that much anyway, so.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
I'm Leland Schneider Jr. We have the Gold Springs pasture. I'm sixth generation cattle rancher, farmer from Slough House. My kids are going to be seventh generation.
Wow.
This Westerberg pasture was leased to my dad in 1992, far along before the dump expansion. And it is an essential part of our business, and we've been great neighbors. Anybody from the landfill calls us. We're on the spot. We have family members and employees all over the place out there. We've put our own money into upkeep on fences, cattle rotations on pastures, especially during drought years and wet years, so that we're not pushing the limits. We're taking very good care of the ground. A 10-year lease, not just for me, but for everybody out there, it gives you a little stability. It gives you, makes you sleep better at night that you're just made an investment into somebody else's property and you're depending on it for your lifestyle and your business and your employees' business and your families, that you don't have to worry about it every year if you're going to have that piece of ground to run your cows or to farm your ground. So if this would be put in that, it would be, our family would be there for another generation, hopefully, taking care of Sacramento County ground and making a living.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you.
William Skinnell? I may be mispronouncing the last name. It looks like S-K-I-N-N-E-L.
Oh, Skinnell.
Oh, you, okay. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. And then it'd be Mr. Prager.
Probably my writing. Thank you, board. I just wanted to address one thing, but partly in question to Mr. Giudelli regarding Gold Springs pasture and the green cycle area. Is that going to be?
Mr. Skinnell, if you face this way, then we can hear what you're saying.
Okay. If the green cycle area is going to be continued in part, one of the leases, or if it's going to be continued separate as part of the current RFP process?
We currently, we currently have no proposals for any sort of composting facility or anything like a green cycle in that area. The green cycle project was indefinitely suspended by the Solid Waste Authority Board in 2015, I believe.
Correct. So would that be, so would it be included now in this process with the RFP for 10 years in current agreements?
Maybe we could have him answer that when you finish your comments. So maybe get all your questions out and then he'll answer them again.
That would be something that would be kept separate, since the county currently has a request for information, a request for interest regarding possible, not composting, but maybe anaerobic digestion or other types of facilities that might be involved on this particular property, that would probably request a 20-year lease on something like that if this parcel was to be accepted for that purpose.
Okay. Okay. We'll be prepared to answer that at the end of comments.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. It looks like Mr. Prager and Ms. Westerberg want to speak together, or you're speaking. Why don't you come forward, Mr. Prager?
Hi.
Hi. And we do have an email from you.
Right. Thank you. My name is Jim Prager, and my wife Susan Westerberg and the Westerberg family are owners of property adjacent to these buffer lands in Slough House. And 500 acres, approximately 500 acres of these buffer lands were taken from us by eminent domain in 2001 in settlement of environmental litigation, in which it was promised that they would be buffer lands. And so we're very concerned about the preservation of these buffer lands. We own the Slough House restaurant immediately across from property number one, and 22 acres and property number seven is immediately across from fields that we lease to Davis Ranch. We're very supportive of Davis Ranch and of the Snyder family, who we leased ground to before the county acquisition. And we're here to support our neighbors and wanting a rational approach to these ag leases going forward. We see this as a very important little valley, a historic and cultural resource for Sacramento, and we'd like to preserve this resource. And we think the approach to the leasing ought to do that. And Supervisor Natoli, let me thank you for your comment on stronger memorialization of this buffer land, because we think in this lease process, what's really missing, what's mentioned is a 10-year term, but what's missing is the criteria for use of it by a tenant, the criteria for evaluating proposals, the requests, how are we going to evaluate the economic terms? This is sort of all not stated in the request. We think it should be as part of the memorialization, Supervisor Natoli, of what's there. And we suggest that this buffer land be transferred to a nonprofit, the Sacramento Valley Conservancy, the Nature Conservancy, a newly formed organization, such that its principles could be used for determining the criteria, not the general public leasing criteria, but the criteria for conservation of this important environmental and historic resource. So we would ask you to consider that as you go forward. And our leases to Davis Ranch over the years provide a fundamental basis for what's fair and appropriate economic term and should be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prager. James, it's either Gel or Veli. I'm not sure by the handwriting. On Jackson Road, James?
Val.
Val, could be.
Yes. My name is James Val. I live on Jackson Road, adjacent to the buffer lands, and have for 31 years. First thing I want to say is, I know Donna Natoli was there, but previous meetings when they wanted to raise the landfill, I remember at the end of the meeting, Isla Collins, sitting over here, saying, "You know, the county has to own this land because we contaminated it, but it'll be the same cows, the same ranchers and farmers," as they closed the meeting. The county is fortunate to have such a large facility at the Kiefer landfill. I have an article from 2013, October 31, about the nation's largest landfill closing. It was all over the internet news media, but unfortunately, it's not true. To put things in perspective, the Puente Hills landfill down in City of Industry was 1,365 acres. The Kiefer landfill is permitted for 1,084 acres. The elevation of the Puente Hills landfill, when they closed it, was 1,148 feet high. The Kiefer landfill, after we fought the process to raise it, is now permitted for 325 feet high. So I can still see the Sierras over the top of it out my back door. The capacity, Puente Hills landfill, the largest in the nation, was permitted for 174 million cubic yards. It was closed because their permit expired. Kiefer landfill was permitted for 117.4 million cubic yards, substantially larger. I'll tell you, my experience is, things have gotten better out there since they started covering the waste. We don't have the smells. The rendering plant's gotten better. We still have to look at it. It gets bigger. But things have improved.
Good.
One thing on this proposal that they gave, I printed out the board package, and under Attachment 2, in the Gold Springs pasture, if you go down it, and he addressed this, I think, it does say, "Kiefer Special Planning Area, Green Cycle Organics Recycling Facility." It went to the community CPAC, and I'll tell you right then, there was no good words for it. And the next meeting, Mr. Sloan came and said the project was dead. I assume it's still dead. To put something in the buffer's lands that they say is going to stink, we know is going to stink, is not acceptable. It'd be like putting a SpaceX launch pad at the metro airport buffer areas, because it flies. It's not the same. I do support the use of agriculture as it has been. I wish there was some way to lock that in, because you never know when you're going to have a new proposal. When the SPA proposal originally came out, I have a two-acre parcel. They were going to put 150 acres of industrial offices right behind us off Grant Line with a 20-foot setback. They pulled that out right away because they do it with. away because they knew it wouldn't fly. But they had the whole buffer lands planned for different things, and it was going to be Garbage Town USA, any kind of recycling, waste. I think there, again, the county is fortunate to have a large facility with a lot of capacity. But you also have Cordova Hills coming in. You have the City of Ranch Cordova developing. We don't need any more nuisance things.
Okay.
The rendering plant has shown, the landfill's shown, that it causes problems. Thank you.
John Merchant, then Dana Poe.
Thanks, Jim.
Hello. My name is John Merchant. I'm a 32-year resident of Ranch of Marietta, former president of the RMA and the Ranch of Marietta CSD, and currently one of Supervisor Frost's appointees to the Sacramento CPAC. I'm wondering, all these recountings of what we referred to 32 years ago as the Dump War, all of these things have routed their way through the CPAC, and I'm wondering why we really, in this case, just got a courtesy notice. This has been the traditional place for our south part of the county to coalesce around proposals that deal with the dump and development issues. We're down here really as a result of my getting this courtesy notice, and nobody else in Ranch of Marietta, the RMA, the CSD, has had any real chance to respond. One of the things I thought was important as Supervisor Natoli, who, he and I were a lot younger the first time we went through this, was the fact of the promise that was made and the compromise that was made around the Coalition for Alternatives to Kiefer Landfill, the 175-foot total elevation that we reduced, the expanding of the footprint of the dump, and the subsequent creation of the buffer around it. As a result of getting that negative deck that we got to create the buffers, we understood way back then that there were promises that were made. And I just want to make sure that those promises, like Supervisor Natoli alluded to, are remembered, number one, and, number two, honored going forward. And again, I'd really like to see this thing aired out in the public, and I really think this thing ought to route back through CPAC and then come back to you with the recommendations for everybody that lives out in our section of the county. One more important point for Ranch of Marietta is that there is nothing in that area of the county, whether it be traffic or development, that has the potential to adversely affect our lifestyle and adversely affect the value of our homes like that dump does. It can smell. It can leach. It can create traffic. It can create noise, and it has done so throughout the period of time that I've been out there. And I want to make sure that those considerations are taken into account when we make a decision on the long-term leases around the buffer. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dana Poe, and then Eduardo Gomez.
Hello.
James Utterback.
Hi. I'm one of the landowners that farms directly next to the number four buffer lands in blue.
You are Dana Poe?
I am Dana Poe.
Thank you.
And I'm from the Carney family. We moved there when I was eight, and it's home to me. What I want to say is that I can remember my mom and my dad coming down here, talking with Dawn on numerous occasions, and talking with all of you, different supervisors, but in the same chairs. And it was a really big deal with the dump and the problems associated. And I may not be farming here in Slough House for generations, but we are seventh-generation agricultural farmers here in California. And we moved to this area because we felt we could farm here. And the irony is that when I moved here when I was eight, and we moved into this neighborhood, we're still the new neighbors, because these families have been here for generations, and it's important to recognize that. My mom passed away in 16, but I remember the fights with the dump and the issues and the things that happened. And the reality is that as we move forward, it's important to have clarity regarding what actually happened and what was promised, because there's turnover. That's just a natural state of things. It happens. And it's imperative, as Dawn said, to memorialize these items in writing, so that going forward, there's countless things that my mom would have remembered that I don't. There's people out in this audience here that remember things that I don't. But I know this, it's imperative that if we, as a community here in Sacramento, want to advocate for farm-to-fork ideas and things like that, we need to advocate for farms. And if we don't make them viable, it simply doesn't work. So I want to thank you for your time today, and I want to ask for clarity, long leases for these landowners and people that have been here for generations. Please honor the promises that were made in the past by your predecessors.
Thank you, Ms. Poe.
Thank you.
Eduardo Gomez, and then James Utterback. Mr. Utterback is the last speaker I have. If someone wants to speak, it hasn't signed up, you need to get up to the top and fill the form out. Excuse me.
Great time. Like I'm Eduardo. He's my neighbor. To whom it may concern, my name is Eduardo Gomez. I apologize for not being able to attend this meeting due to prior work obligations. I've been a tenant of Sacramento County for many years. I lease grazing land in Slough House by Kiefer Boulevard. I also represent Alforex Seeds. That has also been a longtime tenant of the county. My cattle operation has been dependent on the leased county property along with private neighboring properties. It has been a concern and a worry not to be able to maintain a long-term commitment, as it does affect my cattle operation. It is hard to make plans to expand and build business, not knowing if next year's lease is available to me. I've been a Slough House resident for more than 30 years. I've built many strong relationships with my neighbors. We all look to each other for support, and we maintain good farming and ranching practices with respect to the area to grow the best crops and to produce safe food for the nearby community. We appreciate your kind consideration to keep the landscape of the community of Slough House undisturbed and able to continue operating under the normal conditions that it does today and has in years past. Thank you in advance for your support. Your decision is appreciated. Eduardo Gomez.
Thank you. Mr. Utterback? Good morning.
I'm here to, I am one of those landowners next to one of the pieces there, and my concern is the liability. Our family has worked the ground, just like the rest of these families have. But I do not want this have a situation out there, example like the U-Picket or the Christmas trees, somebody getting hurt that's not in that area. And I just want to express my opinions, the liabilities, because they're going to come back at me, because that's what lawyers do. As you know, you know, they'll attack the first person, which would be you, the county, and then, you know, and then you just start going down the line. So we need to have a little more better relationship with the land manager. I wish the land manager would come out and talk to our, to the landowners in the area once in a while, maybe once a year, and we can express our opinions, what we think they can improve on. And that would be a perfect example. We have a tree out there on the county property, next to my levee there, it's about ready to fall down. And this is the road that the U-Picket go down to it. So if that tree falls down, it hurts somebody from U-Picket, it's going to be a bad situation for all of us. So I wish, again, the land manager would come around and talk to the owners of the property that they're working, so we can express our opinions. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Utterback. I was kind of taking notes here about some comments that I think you need to give us some feedback on, and longer leases was one of them.
Sure. Longer leases certainly bring some stability. That is something the Department of Waste Management, and I'll speak for the department, is interested in. We run a waste management operation with trucks going around and collecting things and taking to recycling facilities and landfill.
Yeah, we understand what you do.
We're not necessarily land managers. With a special relationship like we have in Slough House, longer term is, I think I speak for the department when I say good for us.
So in the context of the proposal today, it was intended to be responsive to the concerns that have been raised at the podium. This will be the first time there's been a 10-year lease arrangement. And there was a number of references made today that historically the county has shorter term, has had shorter-term lease arrangements. So one of the things that we thought would be beneficial, and the reason we're actually talking to the board today about the topic, is to do much longer lease arrangements, which are the 10 years. Currently, there are a number of lease arrangements that are, that have basically lapsed, and they're in a month-to-month. So this expression of concern about certainty is partially driven by that. There are a number of people who continue to work this property in good faith, as was demonstrated today, but don't even have a long-term lease agreement. So we think that the 10 years, in terms of the term of the lease arrangement...
Do all the leases expire at the same time?
No, they don't.
So that's why some are on month-to-month, you're just trying to catch up. So have you been out and talked to all these people here?
I certainly stay in communication with our tenants. Unfortunately, I suppose it's a little bit more of a reactive. I mean, there are certain things that are regularly scheduled. We know we have to get in and take care of the creek. There's a lot of creek work that needs to be done on an annual basis, and we try to stay on top of that.
Well, it seems like you ought to be in touch with the owners of the land. I mean, you're talking to people seven or eight generations. They certainly haven't gone anywhere. I mean, tenants are fine, but property owners are the ones that make the decision on leases.
The neighbors and their leases, I mean, we stay in touch with our tenants, certainly. There are neighbors.
I wouldn't use tenants and property owners as the same thing.
No. Okay. Agreed. Our tenants are lessies.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of staying in better touch with neighboring property owners, we could certainly do that. We don't, they're not much in the way of projects or things to, I mean, let me back up a second. There are two property owners that we do have stayed in touch with, largely because we're responsible for the creek that flows across their property.
Well, the other thing that came through pretty strongly was, remember the promises and memorialize. And it sounds to me like that would be, somehow, they don't know that. Is it not in writing somewhere that can be memorialized? I mean, and I go back to the length of leases, if somebody's been there for seven generations, a 10-year lease is, you know, dropping the bucket. But memorializing all the promises made, that ought to be part of an agreement, I would think.
Supervisor, I think we're moving into another facet of this discussion. One of them had been the term of the lease arrangements, which is now different than what had been considered before.
Right.
But really, I think a lot of the issues that are being raised right now are the form of the RFP, and what kind of criteria would be applicable to that, and how that could affect people that are current users or not. There, oftentimes, when you think of an RFP, the first thing somebody goes to is the best economic equation, right? And that was even expressed kind of tangentially here by a number of people, saying you wouldn't want to necessarily make that determination based on what the best, the highest return dollar-wise would be to the county for the lease arrangement. And that, in fact, is not what the intent would be from the RFP process that we're talking about now. There were a number of clear benefits that were demonstrated by the current lessies, right, in terms of the benefits of them continuing to operate and manage those properties. Many of them were articulated. So, but one thing that we do lack today, and I just wanted to put it out, that it may lead to another step for us, is the criteria that really would be applicable to this RFP framework. Because we do want to have an opportunity for the county, as county-owned properties and managed property, or owned properties, pardon me, to have a regular leasing kind of evaluation and process, right? And maybe a 10-year cycle's right. But really, the unknowns here are the question of, what's the criteria going to be? Is that going to lock me out, right? Fundamentally, I think that's what we're hearing. And I just checked as testimony was going on. We do not have a good codified document that says, historically, these are all the criteria that have been considered by the board over multiple years of lease arrangements, as well as the approvals of various activities at the landfill. So I think it's a legitimate point. And it may be appropriate for us, one, to get direction from the board today relative to, do pursue an RFP process, do consider something that would be in a 10-year sort of cycle, a longer cycle, and task us with putting together a transparent and obvious, or transparent process of what would be included in the RFP as it relates to the criteria, basically. So, you know, preservation of the area, there's a number of criteria. And we have not brought that to you today. And so I just...
It sounds to me like it's pretty important that it exist in some form. I don't know whether the form you suggest is the best way to do it or not, but there ought to be some discussion about it.
I agree.
And that's why we're in front of you today.
Pardon me?
That's why we're here today, is to start that process, memorializing. The term is something that we do, in terms of short, a longer term, get input from the board. And as Mr. Penrose said, if there's other things you need to memorialize in the RFP, if that's the desire of the board, we can do that. If you want us to have other policies, we can do that, too.
Well, personally, I think there ought to be some way to memorialize this, whatever is appropriate legally. If it's in a lease, an RFP doesn't sound like the right place to put it for me. But I think that is all a bigger, pieces of a bigger problem about communication. And I think I would expect you to spend some time on that. And then I didn't understand, there was, one of the speakers said something about a stinky project, or it was planned to be a stinky project, and I didn't really understand that. Could you discuss that, please?
Sure. Several years ago, the department proposed a special planning area that would be a, basically a recycling industrial park immediately across the road from the entrance to Kiefer landfill. That idea certainly had a lot of support amongst the waste management industry in the region, looking for places to take materials. You know, there is, you may have, you may be familiar with National Sword, the Chinese policy of restricting the flow of materials.
Yes, sir.
You may be considered, aware of some organics management mandates that are slowly being implemented. It made sense from that perspective, not surprisingly. The community there was uninterested.
Okay. So is there any clarification from this department that that's not going to happen, or is still on the table? I think that's what the speaker asked about.
So that proposal is not going forward. It was dropped, and there's nothing at all being considered right now for that sort of use in that area, which was in response to that one person's review of this. So the document that's provided here, the property summary, is providing a historical information about these various properties. And the Gold Springs pasture, one of the bullets in there talked about the special planning area, which is giving some of the history that had happened there, and that there had been considered the green cycle activity. But that is, that project is dropped, as well as the special planning area has been dropped in that area. So that's, just for the record, at least.
Okay. I mean, if you'd had a community meeting with these people before this meeting, you might have solved several of those questions. But some other supervisors have questions. Mr. Serna.
So, thank you. So on the subject of the duration of the lease, or the contract, I guess, I've heard now several times from our executive team that 10 years reflects, from our perspective or your perspective, a fairly long time, perhaps longer than what we've used in the past. But do we know whether or not these folks think 10 years is a long time? That seems like a very good question to be trying to understand in terms of their perspective. So I'd like to hear from you, I guess, Mr. Penrose, what your thoughts are on kind of the relative thinking about what 10 years really means.
Well, the only input that I have relative to that today is that the folks who testified did talk about an extended period of... who testified did talk about an extended period of lease agreement and a 10-year being one that would be somewhat desirable. I can't say that that's been pinned any further than that, that we've had much shorter ones in the past, which has taken people through this, I've got to, you know, evaluate my relationship in the lease agreement more often than what we would like, so.
So, do we know whether or not anyone's brought up in conversation, formally or otherwise, something other than 10 years? Or is everyone in agreement that 10 years is the right duration?
I don't have any specifics that anyone has offered. I mean, I think that generally speaking, you have to, and I hesitate to speak on behalf of the community of Slough House, that's not, I think, appropriate for me to do. I think depending on the crop you're growing makes a big difference. We heard talk about wine grapes, and...
Now, there's an incredible amount of investment that goes on with agricultural activity, and a lot of it is measured not in years, but sometimes in decades.
Right.
Just as a point of reference, the prior lease agreements have typically been five years. So, this is just, just as a point of reference, and there may be further work that should be done on the duration.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I want to first thank my colleagues for their, their questions and comments thus far, and just take a moment here. I think that, Mike, you've certainly correctly portrayed in, again, in conversations with staff, and certainly with landowners and, and farmers and ranchers over time. I think this really does bring us to kind of a combination of juncture points. Certainly, the leases and their terms, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna's question about maybe longer term. And I think part of that, though, is informed by the conversation, much of which we heard today, but I think with the community, and I'd like to, Mr. Merchant's suggestion that maybe do a workshop with the Kasuna CPAC. Obviously, we have farmers and ranchers that are represented on that body, or a community meeting, which I'm more than willing to, to host if that's the track we want to go on. But I think to the point about the leases, that's important to the long-term commitment. But we, as the property owner in the public interest, we're not the farmer, and we're not the rancher, and we're dependent upon, obviously, those folks who take that property into, into the trust that they do to be good stewards of it, in their working of the land, however they apply their farming and ranching knowledge, and certainly their, their pursuits. And so, I think what that takes me to is back to the point about the clarity and about the promises, and I think not just the criteria by which we evaluate the, the value, the intrinsic value, the agricultural value, the historical value, the cultural value. But I think what this county, as being the owner of the public asset of the, of the landfill, which obviously is a very important asset, our management of that day-to-day, to David's point about waste management, recycling's a responsibility there, but also then with the approach that this Board, again, utilizing ratepayer dollars to bond against, to acquire the buffer lands, and I believe, and I don't just believe, I know the promises as related to the long-term commitment for use of those lands. And I think it was very, very revealing during discussions, and again, we had some community meetings, many of the folks in here in the room were there regarding the special planning area, and some clarity that, using my word, in that application that was being sought relative to any future uses there. And I think, bless you, it was very aptly pointed out that there was a, you know, a very clear rejection of that in, in the community, and again, to Doug's credit, and Mike, you know, and others, you know, after spending some dollars on an environmental review and so forth, that was dropped. That doesn't mean that long-term, to somebody, you know, either approaches this county or not, wouldn't come forward, propose to do something on those lands. And so, I think it just further highlights for me, even those are the upgrounds, they're the upperlands and are largely grazed, I think it's important if we want to really preserve and protect the agricultural operations, recognizing the utility of the landfill, the impacts that it can have, but also the importance that it brings to this community from a standpoint of disposal and processing of solid waste, then I think that we need to spend some time, and, and as I said earlier in the, in the hearing, memorialize, and maybe even talk about confining other activities, like a green cycle, that would be confined to landfill. When we have the acreage we have there, obviously, it has its limitations, but if there were those proposals in the future, rather than looking across the street or downstream somewhere, and I think so, there would be some policy embedded in that. And I do think it's important, as we've evolved now, 20 years, hence decisions about the expansion of landfill, which had a useful life of 70 years, maybe even longer under the permits, that for the future, for the folks in this audience, but for the future of all the folks who are ratepayers and citizens of this county, I think that we need to, you know, boil that down and have a, a, a policy document that could be reviewed by the community that we've brought before this Board, and allow us to deliberate in these chambers, and ultimately to give very clear and very, I think, understandable direction around that. Then, that I think informs the criteria by which you would evaluate leases and relationships that we either have that are longstanding or that might be newly introduced. But I think it needs to be very clear that this Board, and I think, again, to the person on this Board, and, you know, now and in the past, we've been very strongly committed to, to the farming and preservation of farming and ranching in that part of the, of our county. And I think we have the ability with discussion here today on the longer-term leases to develop the criteria, but also the policy framework by which we would then make it very clear to this Board, to the community, and for our successors in interest, that this is, you know, the approach we're going to take when it comes to management of one of our assets, the landfill, but also the management of the lands are so critical to, you know, long-term viability of Slough House farming and ranching, and what it means to this community. And so, maybe the Planning Department could be involved as part of that, certainly working with community development and with our community, our community council. So, I guess, as a part of this, Mr. Gill, I would like to see us, again, after we hear from everybody, to give some direction regarding that. And we're, we're in some holdover status as it relates to, to the leases. Timeliness, I think is important, and something, again, you know, whatever form you want to use to gather that information. But I think the way you presented this today certainly sets the table for that. I'm appreciative of the efforts, and I know certainty and clarity, I think, are words of the day, and I, and I think we can achieve that going forward on this particular matter. So, that's what I have to offer. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
While we're looking at these, extending the time on these leases, I noticed the prior leases were five-year with an option to extend for a year. Is there a possibility of a lease with an option to renew, subject to current market conditions and the county needs at the time, that writes in a little bit of flexibility, but then doesn't end up with another RFP at the end of 10 years?
Yes, I think that is a possibility to be done, yeah.
Okay, we have no more questions or comments of the Board. Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, well, maybe if I could frame a motion as, as it relates to, I guess, comments I made that certainly to maybe give, give direction, and I, before we go out with the leases, I think we need to, you know, where we are today, take a couple other steps in between. And so, if it would be appropriate to, under the direction of the county executive, to develop a policy statement for consideration by this Board as relates to the buffer lands and their long-term management and use, to involve the community council. So, we, at the point where we have something to take out to the community council, use that as a form if it's appropriate, work with landowners and tenants in the Slough House area, and maybe return this Board, is 90 days, is that sufficient enough to get it back here? And then, at that point in time, we would be talking about criteria and about valuation as relates to other things beyond just a dollar value, and have a policy statement, and maybe have a public hearing, again, we would have a public hearing around it, and then direct, at that point, going forward on leases. Because I think it would inform some of the term discussion that both Supervisor Frost and Peters and Serna all raised, and so I think it's important to maybe take that step initially, and recognize there's some work involved in that, but I do think it puts us in a good position to, to move forward. So, that would be the most...
Is that enough time?
Yeah, that...
Did you get the date, Madam Clerk?
No, if we could have the flexibility on the 90 days, it's up to 90 days, we can...
Okay, so you want us to drop it, and you'll come back with a date?
You'll come back, yeah.
Okay, so you want to make a motion?
Okay, I mean, a motion, yes.
To drop. Second, please vote.
Drop and direct.
What?
To drop and direct, I said we get some direction, right, and drop in the matter, so we'll be back.
Okay.
So, we'll be working with the community and others over the course of the next couple of months, and hopefully come back here and be in a place where we can have good support for what we want to do. Thanks.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming today. Sounds like you'll have some attention here in the next couple of months. Okay, we do have a number of off-agenda speakers. I assume on this CPS issue that, that these are all in order of how you want to speak. So...
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I do have a public comment that was requested to be read into the record regarding CPS.
It'll be in the record. We're coming back on this issue.
Okay. I have one that they wanted, they're not here, and they ask that we read it into the record.
On the issue we've already voted on?
No, this is for CPS.
Well, we're going to hear the people who are here first.
Okay.
Okay, so Reverend Ayesha Odey.
Good morning.
Since you have several speakers, do you want to take the 15-minute version?
Yeah, I'm going to do the, the presentation, and then they'll, we have about four speakers after that.
Okay, so we'll stop the timer whenever it's time you tell us there's another person coming up.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right, well, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Please introduce yourself for the record, all of you.
Yes. I'm Reverend Ayesha Odey. I'm Executive Director of the Justice Reform Coalition, and also Reverend of the Order of Alufamy. And I've come here today to address the Board about the issues of CPS and family court that we've been dealing with for the past 10 years. It says at the beginning of the California Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 300 to 400, that it is the intent of the legislature that nothing in this section disrupts a family unnecessarily or intrude inappropriately into family life. Now, these are the codes which govern the family and juvenile courts, as well as family, social services, and the CPS. This is the basic and overriding tenet of conduct for the whole family law system in California. Yet, it is violated every hour of every day by this system, and CPS is the main legal tool used. The state's child welfare system is broken and corrupt. For the past 10 years, our organization, the Justice Reform Coalition, has been dealing directly with this system on behalf of parents and families who have had their children unnecessarily, unjustly, and illegally taken by CPS with the court's complicity. There are thousands of such cases in Sacramento every year. We have watched and documented many of these cases, enough to show a pattern and practice of violation of federal and state laws, and CPS and family court administrative codes, broken in order to get children into a profit-incentivized system of maltreatment and neglect, which under any other situation would be considered human trafficking. We have stood by and assisted these families as caseworkers, social workers, CPS, DHHS, and court officials collude and cause irreparable damage to these families and children. We have documented this abuse under color of law and have attempted to meet with, to meet with, inform, and question CPS, DHHS, and state and local officials about this problem to no avail. We set up a community forum for those officials and a community to come together, but had to cancel it because the then-director of DHHS, Sherry Heller, refused to allow CPS and other support group officials, under her purview, to attend and advise others not Even after these same officials have acknowledged violations and wrongdoings in a series of policy and information meetings that we've been conducting over the past couple of years, the status quo has continued. Nothing is done, and situations are not corrected. In fact, we are told over and over that there is nothing that can be done to correct this situation because the courts have made their decisions. In other words, administrative decisions made by the courts acting as agents for CPS, even if they are wrong or illegal, can't be changed once the mistakes are found, even if no real reason existed for the actions in the first place, because a decision has been made by the courts. Now, this is ludicrous. It is a violation of their oaths, the basic trust of the community, to knowingly continue these wrongful actions. Legal decisions go from being wrong to wrongful when they demonstrate both disrespect for the law and a failure of empathy in regards to persons who appeared before the court. Now, this is the case in easily 80% of the cases of CPS and the family court in general. When a judge demonstrates disrespect for the law, as we have seen over and over, and disregard, disregard for the people the law affects, the need to act to maintain public confidence in administration of justice outweighs concerns about protecting judicial independence, confidentiality, or immunity. In addition, public officials, judicial officials, academics, and lawyers must be willing to identify, criticize, and correct wrongful judgments and rulings. This isn't happening, and the public confidence and the rule of law and those responsible for it has been seriously eroded. It is said that lawyers ought to respect the confines of legality in their advising and in their advocacy, and if lawyers ought to do so, then surely no real argument needs to be made to assert that judges must as well. Indeed, what authority can a judge claim other than through the law? A judge who adopts an attitude other than fidelity to law seeks to rule by fiat, not law, and that is wrongful. But this is what is happening, and there needs to be a change and accountability. Now, we see in the news the outcry over the separation of children from their families attempting to find asylum here in our country. Yet, we do the same to hundreds of thousands of children of the families of our citizenry, especially here in California, every year. And the outcry is squashed, ignored, and belittled by our public officials. Now, it's got to stop. And equal attention given to this state and national plight and its correction. Now, we have brought several cases before Supervisor Natoli, who has worked with us on our concerns, and has experienced the same frustrations we have due to the lack of cooperation and refusal by all involved in these situations to accept responsibility for what they've done and for these wrongful actions, or to correct them. All we get is finger pointing from CPS and DHHS saying the court is responsible, and the court officials saying that CPS and DHHS are responsible. This is frustrating and unacceptable. Then, to find out that all the info submitted to Supervisor Natoli and others on the Board of Supervisors was confiscated by county council, smacks of abuse of power under cover of law, and an attempt to squash our investigation and search for truth and resolution. In addition, we have had meetings and discussions with involved and responsible officials who acknowledge the wrongful actions, but say they can't do anything about it and point the finger elsewhere. This also is unacceptable and has to stop. And what we want is a meeting with court officials, CPS, DHHS, and state and county execs under the auspices of this Board of Supervisors to address this problem. We need for them to discuss with us who is responsible for what, and present us with legal reasons and rules as to why there could be nothing done to rectify these cases where there are gross wrongful violations made under color of law. We feel this is the best way for us to deal with this finger pointing and finally get to who is responsible. This is a county issue, as funds and entities under the county's purview, your purview, are involved, and the problem is affecting the public, your constituents, countywide. The issues of corruption, bias, and abuse within the child welfare system have been well-documented by our organization and others, as well as by the media. Now, it's past time to really address them and do something about them. We need and would like your support in order to make this happen. So, this is our official notice and request to the Board of Supervisors. The requests will be shown to our media contacts, and your response will be presented to them all... also for the community at large. Now, we are planning another public forum to be held in the fall of 2018 where we will present our report to the community. We would like to have the requested meeting to take place as soon as possible, long before then. We await your response, and your response should be in writing and can be presented to us through our organizational email or Supervisor Natoli's office.
Thank you Reverend Odey. Stop the clock. Okay, we have another speaker, Steve Barnett, and then Otis Moore.
Are the other speakers... I'm separate from them, so if you have other speakers that are related to you...
Oh, it says CPS on it, so I... But different item?
You say no, it's CPS, but the other speakers are related to...
Yeah, we're all in the same organization, so... We're together. We have Pastor Otis.
Okay, we'll put you at the end of the CPS speakers. Otis Moore and Fatima Katum Basi. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Mr. Moore, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chairman and the Board, my name is Otis Moore. I am a pastor of Lighthouse Apostolic Church in the city of Sacramento, California. I have been pastoring since August of 2003. My wife and I are mandated reporters. We are here, we question the Board to intervene in our case concerning the unlawful removal of our six grandchildren. Being taken from everything loving and familiar is among the worst emotional blows that any child can suffer, and it can leave lifelong scars. I like to quote the U.S. Senator Kamala Harris when she was questioning Department of Homeland Security Chief Kirstjen Nielsen, quote, "The president of the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a statement on behalf of the organization stating that he is appalled by a new policy by DHS that will forcefully separate children from their parents, went on to talk about that they will create stressful experiences like family separation, which can cause irreparable harm, disrupting a child's brain architecture, affecting his or her short and long-term health, and these findings are generally shared by the American Medical Association and many child welfare advocates and professionals," unquote. We believe CPS, along with the court, in our case, did a cover-up. Through referee Marlene Hurtalk, when she made the derogatory statement in court referring to my wife and I, quote, "The apple doesn't fall too far from the tree," unquote. By this statement, she implicated my wife and I to be like our two daughters, even though we have no history of drug use or violence. What CPS did was use the 2010 report of court investigator Gisela Wolf, who fabricated a story with the help of Sharon Pegg's and chose not to rely on Catherine Ryan's 2010 detention report. We also re-questioned that the Board implement an oversight committee. My wife and I want to personally thank our Supervisor Don Natoli for giving us the opportunity to address this board, and I want to again, I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Fatima? Yeah, my apologies if I mispronounced your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Fatima Katum Basi, and I have several issues and a couple of cases that are ongoing right now with the Sacramento County. One is child support, another one is CPS, but this issue today is about child protective services, and I want to diddle what Reverend Odey had brought to the floor, and I want to add as well, in Sacramento, we have seen many families torn apart by overzealous social workers who believe they are above the law, by the direction of the county directors. This methodology and social experimentation has seen its results. We know that emoluments are a key factor for the state and county municipalities, and emoluments means incentives, for those who don't know what that means. There has been more settlements and lawsuits within the Sacramento County and as well throughout the state of California, and big hefty settlements have been given out. That can constitute the egregious activities of this administration. For those who had need, who needed one-on-one lesson, these agencies are nothing more than that agents for the executive branch of government. It's not judicial, and all these acts are administrative and are quasi, which means resemble as law, but not law. Unfortunately, the courts are acting in an administrative function or capacity under the disguise of authority, which have and continue to violate one's due process and the supremacy clause of the United States of America, with predetermined court orders signed by a social worker and county director, which we know that targets the poor and misinformed. As now, we have a, as of now, we have a mother who is in the North Sacramento area, which were, there was some allegations of alleged abuse for speaking her five-year-old son. A call from the school that the son attended was made to child protective services and a invalid warrant, which I have right here, signed by a court commissioner without a judicial signature or deputy clerk, removed the child and put the child in Sacramento Children's Receiving Home. The oath, I mean, the alleged warrant was not signed with an oath and affirmation or any affidavit to substantiate the alleged, the removal of this child. This behavior is constant and targets the poor, which I have seen as myself. In the current court decision of Harvard versus the county of Orange County, we show that from this case, there have been two payouts for social workers for overzealous and fabricating evidence to remove children from home. And to reiterate, the state, excuse me, the federal and state law, under Welfare Institution Code 249, basically, it says, the state's clear that no order of a referee removing a minor from his home shall become effective until expressly approved by a judge, and that's the juvenile court. So we know that this is not done, which violates the Fourth and Fourth Amendment rights of our, of these families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Saunders.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Mr. Saunders, I want to point out you had a 15-minute, I mean, everyone talked long ahead of you, so we'll give you a little bit extra time.
I'm from New York. They talk fast.
Okay.
Sunshine is the best of all disinfectants, as was said by Judge Louis Brandeis. It's a fairly well-known quote. CPS has terrorized numerous families with their kidnapping of children, lying, cheating, false claims of abuse, manufacturing false accusatory documents, claiming parental harm towards a child, losing so-called factual documents, accusing parents of negligence and harm towards their children, holding secret collusive meetings with officials prior to an accused parent's hearing in court, and more. We definitely know there are cases where an intervention is warranted, however CPS currently seems incapable of knowing when and where to do so. In 2009, March 2009, the California State Bureau of Audits, BSA, slammed the Sacramento County Child Protective Services in an audit they conducted. The audit found that internal problems at Sacramento CPS were so deep and severe that at least four children died of abuse neglect after CPS bungled their cases and missed clear opportunities to remove them from danger. A draft of an independent report was concluded. The report came to the board. It was a different board in 2009, although some people think we're still here. It also went before seven grand juries. More than 200 recommendations were made, I believe 281, and almost none were followed, even though CPS had stated several times that they would look into it and address it and make changes. Again and again, we're dealing with another murder of an innocent child. The FBI has stated that CPS in California should be permanently closed. We are calling for massive reforms of CPS or for them to voluntarily close down pending an investigation into their patterns of practice. CPS was supposed to help families and children and not destroy them. We call on you to please meet with us. Let's work together. Let's bring in groups together. Let's hash this out, and let's start saving our children rather than reading about another child who's murdered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Okay, that's, I have one more CPS item, but it appears to be a different subject. Oh, sir?
Is it possible I get a few, couple of minutes?
Sure. Is it on this item?
Yes, CPS.
Okay, I don't have a speaker form for you, so that's why I didn't call you. You can fill it out afterwards, but you may fill it out afterwards, but that's why I didn't call on you.
Oh, sorry.
Because I get these, you know, that have people's names on them.
Okay.
Okay, if you'd tell us your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Hazard Sankar. I am a former government auditor. I've been here before. I turned in a, an abduction, a DA abduction report on my behalf, as well as many other voiceless children. The biggest problem here, what we're having, bar none, is the child murder death rate. The U.S. child murder death rate is at an epidemic. I have been involved CPS as an advocate for families and children and family law court, and I must say that I have seen a lot of fraud and corruption in my life in my line of duty, and there is nothing that comes close, not even remotely, as to what is going on here in this county in regards to family law and CPS. Thomas Jefferson, many years ago, the founding father, said that, you know, this country's going to be destroyed from within. He didn't say terrorists. He didn't go on about another country, et cetera, et cetera. He went further to say that this country will be destroyed by the judiciary. At first, when I heard that as a government auditor, I thought it was something, it didn't make any sense. Knowing what I know now, it is absolutely the fact, and this is many years after that statement, so you can only imagine where we are today in regards to our children. Being straightforward, the government, county, are abusing, kidnapping, molesting, trafficking, and/or very involved in the harm, murder of our children.
Mr. Barnett, you're over your time limit, so could you kind of summarize your remarks and just tell us from your heart where you are?
Well, yes, okay. I'll cut to the chase. SBX 211, I'm sure you're probably familiar with that. What I have come to find in my understanding and review of what has been going on with these counties is that we have payments that are being paid to judges. These are bribes. This is racketeering. This is illegal. It's against the Constitution. I understand, yes, SBX 211, that there was this immunity to allow you guys to pay off these judges that the county is sitting in front of. This is the reason why our children are being trafficked, kidnapped, and harmed. I would, I would demand an FBI investigation. They are the only one that has the expertise, the obligation for this type of corruption.
Okay, could you wind up your comments, please?
Thank you.
I might suggest the U.S. Attorney's Office. That would, you know, he can talk to the FBI.
Well, actually, they don't have the expertise, the ability, or the skill. FBI is the only, or FBI or the OIG, coming from an auditor, is that they are the only ones that have the expertise, skills, and ability necessary, and obligation, actually, for color of law and racketeering to cover this type of criminal activity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now I have Steve Barnett, a different issue at CPS.
Thank you very much. We all, we all know CPS is overworked and underfunded, but I just wanted to start with one example. I know of one case where at least eight adults have called CPS related to two children in a child custody case, teachers, a principal, two doctors, including the pediatrician, therapists and counselors involved in their child custody case, all concerned with the care of the children when, in the, when the father has custody. He took their mattresses away, caused bruising on, which caused bruising on their bodies. They exhibited a significant loss of weight because of restriction of food. He says the children are compulsive liars, and I'm not sure how you lie about being bruised and losing weight, and claims the mothers brainwashed them. But miraculously, he tells them that he's a special agent for the California Department of Justice, and everything is dismissed. Everything has been dismissed, except for one case where they could not prove anything. Then one CPS agent took a mediator's report that a judge specifically said that they could not consider, quoted from that mediator's report, submitted it to court, and the judge accepted the report. So, so you have the CPS issue, but you have a broader issue of what's going on with the family law court system. I mean, it really demonstrates a need, as I've come to you previously, about to look into the family law system. I mean, these courts allow mediators and other so-called experts like CPS to decide cases based on false appearances and cronyism instead of actually looking out for the well-being of the children. Mainly, I want to point out that, I mean, this is a statewide problem, and I love the fact that you guys are looking into this and considering this, but I also feel the legislature is something that needs to look into this because it is a statewide problem. Some members of this board have previously said that, oh, you cannot look into this case, we cannot touch the courts. I do want to point out that the separation of powers in federal jurisdiction is different than in the state. In evaluating the separation of powers governed by the California Constitution, the California Supreme Court in Carmel Valley Fire Prediction District versus State of California ruled that legislative actions are permitted if they do not impair the core functions of another branch of government. So there is room for the legislature to work and look into this, and I highly, strongly request that you push for this kind of oversight by the legislature to look into what's going on with the family court system and CPS. Thank you.
Mr. Natoli, you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, one, thank you for accommodating the presentations here this morning, and certainly the comments I focused on. There's a letter to be read into record. I just wanted to reference, I know we can't take any action, but there was a request embodied in Mr. Odey's comments and I think echoed in least, in part, by a couple of other speakers. And before we conclude this item, recognizing it will actually be taken, maybe to hear from Mr. Gill or Mr. Wagstaff about the request for a meeting that would involve a number of officials, I think, to allow for a further airing of these concerns, and so before we left the item, I just wanted to make sure we could have some comments by our executive staff. Thanks.
I think that's Mr. Wagstaff.
A couple, thank you Supervisor, and thank you to the people who testified today. A couple of comments, if I might, to your specific question about pulling together various officials, the comment was made that that would include people from the state and elsewhere, and I don't know how successful we might be in doing that, but a key part of our administration of CPS here is ongoing discussion with people in the community, stakeholders, and we will continue to do that. I would, I would just say that by law and by principle, what we try to do with CPS is leave the child with the biological parents unless all efforts have failed and it's clear that the child is not safe, and we can all appreciate how difficult a decision that is. When a determination is made that the child is not able to safely remain within the home, they do have to submit an application to juvenile court for a protective custody warrant unless it's a situation where the child has to be removed immediately because of the safety issues. All parties are provided with legal counsel when a petition is filed, and that continues through the dependency, dependency of the case in the court. So, yes Supervisor, we are receptive to having ongoing discussions. I can't guarantee pulling in people from other jurisdictions, but I will say this, with CPS, we are a learning organization. We're always looking at our data. We're always consulting with our colleagues in other counties and with our stakeholders in the community, looking at available research. And I just would respectfully but strongly disagree with some of the characterizations of our staff that were made. It's been my experience over more than 40 years that the people working in CPS are dedicated to doing what is right for the child and what is right for their families, but we will continue to have dialogue. We can always learn from the community. That's part of our job, and we will seek to do that. That's part of our job, and we will seek to do that.
Could I ask, Mr. Wagstaff, Mr. Barnett spoke on a different issue. Maybe you can give him your card and he can work on some of the issues for him.
Yeah, and the other thing I should say, I'd be happy to do that. The other thing, Madam Chair, I certainly can't speak to individual cases. I think you can appreciate that.
I understand that. It's prohibited by law.
And some of that was mentioned, and can't do that, but I'm receptive to that discussion, yes.
Okay.
Will we be coordinating a meeting, Bruce? I take it from your comments, you'll coordinate a meeting with Reverend O'Day and some of the principals?
I'll be happy to talk to Reverend O'Day and see where we can go from there, Supervisor.
Because they said they have a public forum on this, and I know that they.
And I can't speak to the history of that. I'd like to hear the particulars of that and see what kind of constructive work we're not be able to do together.
Okay. Thank you all for coming in today. Mr. Wagstaff has said he'll pull together a meeting with you both separately, so thank you. Our next speaker on a different subject is Martha Esch from the, it sounds like Lock Management Association, and then Terry Black on the same subject. Ms. Esch, we do have a two-minute limit.
Thank you. I will talk fast.
Okay.
I'm hoping that your camera can focus on some of my documents I brought today. This is a picture of the Town of Locke. There we go, from 1940, taken by Ping Lee.
Okay.
Lock Management Association and Lock Foundation Board is supposed to be one board. It was created as one 13-member board with a county representative, state parks representative, a historic representative, as elected by a historic organization, three Chinese organization representatives, and at-large seat that is elected from the other 12, and then six directors who represent the property owners in Lock and are elected by the 32 property owners in Lock. The county seat quit in 2013. The state parks quit in 2011. Historic organization, we don't know what historic organization ever elected the representative who claims to be the representative, and his seat was not ratified, or his seat expired in 2017. So he is no longer. Two of the Chinese organizations quit two years ago. The at-large seat was appointed by two of his landlords, and of the six elected seats that are elected by the property owners, they have not held a valid legal election with a third-party inspector of election as required since 2009. So there are no remaining legal boards of directors of the Lock Management Association. It has effectively dissolved itself through non-ratifications. These six have to be ratified by the county, have not been since. As your document shows, the last ratification expired December of last year. There's another document that, back in November, I believe it was Leon Moffett submitted from the SHRA, that said that the common ground areas of the town are to be owned by the Lock Management Association for 15 years. That document was created in May of 2003. So our common ground areas, who owns them now? Does the county own them? Does the SHRA own them? Do the 32 property owners own them? We don't know. I gave you, I typed up a list of 15 questions with yes and no. You could answer yes and no to each of these.
Could you wind up your comments, Ms. Esch?
Thank you. I, we need answers in Lock. We've been asking for seven years. We've gotten no replies to our, I've sent in over 100, well, 107 emails over the past seven years, have never once received a reply. We need answers. The.
Could you wind up your comments, Ms. Esch?
The current boards of directors are illegal, and they are threatening nonjudicial foreclosures on our properties through lawyers. Thank you.
Terry Black?
Hi.
Mr. Black?
I feel this is kind of, after watching you deal with these momentous issues earlier today, I feel a little bit embarrassed about bringing this up, but I'm going to try to get this through as quick as possible so you can go have lunch. I wrote it down. Unfortunately, I've been here so long, the battery is going dead. This is in reference to Lock. My name is Terry Black, and I'm here to discuss the Town of Lock. I have lived in the Delta for over 40 years, and I have restored the historic Grand Island Mansion and the Rite Hotel. Recently, I have completed the restoration of three buildings in Lock. I have spent over $10,000 in repairs of the town's historic walkways and stairways, which were in a dangerous state of disrepair and were lawsuits from visitors waiting to happen. I've had to undertake these projects personally because all the homeowners' fees are now going to BPE Law Group for legal fees stemming from questionable litigation, and nothing is left to do the necessary upgrades to make the town safe. Years ago, when the Lock Management Association was first created by the county to govern the town in 2003, I'm sure it was done with the best intentions, but over the years, serious problems have developed. When the LMA was formed, it had, it was to be governed by a 13-member board, including representatives from state parks and a representative from the county. Today, those members no longer are involved, leaving a small group of board members to pursue agendas that do not reflect the views of the majority of the property owners. Without the county's oversight, the town has descended into infighting that has led to expensive, unnecessary lawsuits between the board and several property owners. The result is there is an ongoing legal bill that has climbed to over $200,000 with a 10% carrying charge on the unpaid balance. The current board seemingly has the law group on speed dial at $320 per hour, which is unsustainable with no end in sight. I'm here today to ask for the help of the county to help resolve these questions. The county needs to return its representative to the LMA and to see that the CCNRs and bylaws governing the town are modified to deal with the current reality and then adhered to by the board. I am simply asking that the county do what it said it would when they formed the LMA or help dissolve it.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
That's it. Thank you.
Can I ask County Council, do we know who's in charge of this group? Is it really a legal group any longer?
I actually don't know. June Powell May from my office is the attorney that's assigned to all the issues related to Lock, and I would have to refer that to her. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I know that when Martha was here last week and spoke with the county executive, and certainly Terry's called my office, and I've spoken with him personally, and we're going to meet, I think that one of the, and soon, and I don't know if the meeting's been set, but to meet with County Executive Rob Leonard, and we should involve June Powell May's there as well, and I think certainly the questions that Martha's asked, some of these have been asked repeatedly, but I think to Terry's comments, I know we had a session where we had a county, I guess, assigned or at least sponsored facilitator to assist the LMA in some of the discussions, and, but I think these issues certainly are ones that, in the meeting with you, Mr. Gill, and I'm going to be involved in that as well, we need to, I think, you know, bore down to this, but I think certainly this question that Chair asked continues to be, I think, repeated more and more. Do we have a functioning entity? And secondly, you know, if so, what responsibilities does the county have? What responsibilities do they have? Or, as Martha's outlined, is there some other status as it relates to that organization? So, I don't know. Has that meeting been set?
We're in the process of getting it set.
Okay. Again, I made myself willing and available, so, okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. No other, any other business?
Madam Chair, I do have the record, public comment to read into the record.
I think you can just attach it to the record.
Okay.
Thank you. We're.
We have closed session.
We have closed session.
What about CEO comments? Not comments? I have no comments, no.
CEO, have any comments?
No, ma'am.
Supervisors, have any comments?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
I just wanted to express my public thanks to Barry Chamberlain, head of our code enforcement. I'm no wallflower when it comes to South Oak Park and the condition that find that part of our unincorporated county these days, and did quite a bit of 3-1-1-ing last week. We have a particular problem just for the edification of our CEO that has now migrated to 42nd Street, just south of 23rd Avenue, and it's a large collection of personal items, including construction tools and equipment and furnishings, and this is a problem that's now about a year old, and it's literally migrated around about a four-block area. It has gotten so bad that it blocks travel lanes, and unfortunately, I've been receipt of some of the rationale from Barry's staff in the last few days explaining that it seems there's little that can be done about a situation like that if the person who owns the equipment, the property, is on site unless and until the sheriff intervened, the sheriff's department intervenes. So I'd like the CEO to please continue to work with Barry and his staff to see what can be done. It is inconveniencing my constituents down there. It's blocking sidewalks, gutters, parking lanes, and travel lanes, and is just unacceptable.
Any other comments? Okay, we are adjourning to closed session. Thank you. [music]